I asked for the meeting, regular meeting of the Board of Education to come to order. At this time, Madam Secretary, can you take attendance, please?
Yes, all Board members are present.
Please rise for this pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the Board is coming back into regular session following a couple of study sessions and a brief closed session. So we had a conversation about establishing a data culture with our Learning Services team. And we also discussed our superintendent evaluation process. And then we also discussed some collective bargaining strategy. And so now we'll come together again. And I just wanted to make a few remarks. So I want to thank you all for being with us this evening. It's been kind of a crazy and eventful time since the last time we've been, we have met here. There's been a lot of wonderful activities happening around the district. I'm not going to talk about those things. But I just want to take a few minutes and take you, tell you about a couple of meetings that some of us have recently attended. So first, on November 2nd, Howard and I were invited to listen to a roundtable discussion on the future of education in Michigan, which was hosted by the Oakland University Educational Leadership Program and Dr. Robert Maxfield. And Dr. Glass was one of nine panelists, including four superintendents from very diverse communities. There were two business leaders, Michigan Futures, the Skilman Foundation, a community college president. And the discussion really centered in my, how I see it, was that it was about the urgent need to create a better collaboration between the education foundation and business leaders to create a more equitable system that supports higher achievement for all students across the state and needed supports for all children in poverty and other needs so that we can maximize opportunity for all children to be well-educated and to realize their dreams. So this group plans to meet again and to grow the number of participants in the dialogue. And I'm very proud that our superintendent is a leader in that conversation. Secondly, Paul and Howard and I attended a presentation last Wednesday by Robert Moore, who's a deputy superintendent of finance of Oakland Schools. And he's also the director of the School Finance Research Project. And with the help of funding from the Kellogg Foundation, the collaborative leaders are a broad-based bipartisan statewide group. And they issued an RFP for the purpose of determining the cost for funding educational achievement for all Michigan children's PK through 12. And the work has been assigned to two nationally renowned research teams that have broad national experience in doing these studies. And the final report of the collaborative is expected to be released on January 15th. And Tina has referred to that in her update to us last week. And there is information on the school district website. So I want to acknowledge that some of our Bloomfield leaders have been helped on some of the committees, helping to provide data for that report that's being put together. And all school districts and many organizations around the state are being asked to pass a resolution that is in support of the work of the collaborative. And so I will be providing to you a draft resolution that I hope that we can consider at our next board meeting. When we were at, several of us were at the MASB Fall Conference this weekend. We were asked by our state association to consider this resolution in support of the research. And I hope that you will contact me if you have any questions or concerns about it. And there is a great deal of additional information about the collaborative and the work that they are doing at www.fundmischools.org. And there's a great deal of information that's available. Paul and Howard and I, I got a great deal of information about it last week. And I know Tina and Rob have a great deal of information. And I encourage you to learn more about who is partnering as part of the collaborative. SEMCOG's part of it. Barton Mallow's, Mr. Maybach is part of it. It's a, it's a, it's a very broadly based, there are charter schools that are part of it. It's a very comprehensive group of individuals that are working to come up with, two, they're using two different methodologies that are in addition to the adequacy study that was completed a year ago. This time is going to add on the dimensions that were lacking in the last study that involved the funding costs for special education for at-risk, for career and technical education. What am I missing?
Small and rural districts.
Yep. So this is hoping to come up with a number that will allow, it won't be just one number. It won't be just a number. It will sort of count for the disparities in each of those areas and how we can help to come up with a way to fairly help all kids be successful and have the tools they need. So please look for that resolution as it comes. And I look forward to working with you guys on that. And then finally, I do want to mention that as part of being at the MASB Fall Conference this weekend, Jason and Howard and I all had the opportunity to attend a number of very interesting sessions from a lot of different topics. But I just wanted to bring up one because the last couple of board meetings, we've had a lot of data that's been shared with us through our information services and communications and also with the scores that we were getting from M-Step at our last meeting. And coincidentally, on Friday night, I took a three-hour course from MASB. It was one of their highest level courses focusing on student achievement. And I spent three hours with 35 other school board members from across the state of Michigan talking about student achievement. And in the course of those three hours, we never talked about M-Step. And when we were talking about what are the things that help we can do to help our students be successful. And I just want to remind us all, because we've just been having our data dig. And it's, I just wonder, you might have saw that data and M-Step scores help us be accountable to our community and we are responsible to being able to do that. But there are so many other things that go into helping our students be successful, from school culture and the facilities and providing professional development and extracurriculars. There, we had lists that were, you know, 25, 30 items long on both external and internal features of how, what constitutes elements that affect student achievement. And I want us to keep that in mind, that it's, we are, we are working all the time through policy. And one of the things that we put in our emphasis on through the budget, through what we fund, through the goals that we set with our superintendent and our strategic plan, we are always trying to find the ways to put our effort towards the things that helped our students perform their best. And then lastly, I just want to let everybody know that on December 14th, we are adding a special board meeting to our calendar. It will be at 6:30 in the Commons of our Bloomfield Hills High School. And some of you may recall that last spring, before our board president, Ingrid Day, retired from the board and moved up north. And at graduation, we surprised her and told her that we, as a board, wanted to commence the process to name the Commons of our new high school, the Day Commons. And so at 6:30 on that evening, December 14th, we will have a brief board meeting. Well, we will vote to do that and then have a reception with Ingrid to thank her for all of the effort and support that she has given to our district. So I wanted to be sure that everyone knows that that special meeting will be taking place at our high school on December 14th. That's an add-on to our calendar. All right, Dr. Glass, your report, yeah.
Can I just add a couple of things?
Well, I was going to say a general discussion. Maybe we could talk some more about the MASB.
Just in addition to some of the things you were just talking about.
Couple of things. As President Van Ooyen said, Rob and Cynthia and I were at a session led by, or led by Kristine McDonald related to where we are going related to education in the state of Michigan. Last week, Kristine McDonald, well, Kristine McDonald is the host of a show on WTVS called My Week. And last week, she interviewed, or the guest was Doug Rothwell, who is the head of Business Leaders for Michigan. And Kristine McDonald specifically referenced the discussions that was happening over at the hotel there and asked Mr. Rothwell about what, how we can try to get education and business working closer together. And at least he was, he's aware that we're trying to get more linkage between the two organizations. And I think Business Leaders for Michigan is going to come out with a report over the next month or so related to education. So hopefully, some of the questions that Kristine asked will show up in that report. And then also, when we were up at MASB, one of the luncheons that we went to, I happened to sit down next to Dr. Richard Zile, who is the co-president of the Michigan State School Board. And had the opportunity to talk to him for a good length of time about the collaborative that we have learned about the week before. So I took, I actually had an extra copy of the material and gave it to him. And he's supposedly, I think in February, the state board is going to have Bob Moore come and present to him or to them. So now he's aware and has some of the backup material that he can prepare.
And we will have an opportunity before they will because our Oakland County School Board Association presentation on the collaborative will be January 24th. All right, Dr. Glass.
Okay, thank you. So our high school was busy this weekend. I was unable to be here because I was out of town. It's something I'll describe to you in a minute, but I saw the tweets. Thank you for all those who tweeted. We had the fifth annual girls-only robotics competition hosted at our high school. And our teams did exceptionally well. And so you saw the guiding principles alive and well in that, in that competition. This week, I had an opportunity at the end of last weekend and into Saturday to attend sort of the American Association of School Administrators Gala and legislative session for state school superintendents of the year. So this was sort of the end of the 2017-year cycle for me. And I had an opportunity to network with all of the other superintendents of the year from the other states. And we spent some time on Capitol Hill getting a sort of a briefing and what's going on nationally. Surprisingly, that, maybe it shouldn't be so surprising, but the proposed changes to the federal tax code would have significant impacts to education. Not a lot of people know that. But for example, Medicaid dollars, a substantial amount of Medicaid funds flow to public schools. Teachers have to document the work that they do with certain students who are Medicaid eligible or services that we provide that are Medicaid eligible. And those are confidentially documented and submitted. And we are reimbursed for those, for the time that teachers spend on those services. And it adds up to quite a lot of money. And that happens across all school districts. So anything that would happen in the federal code that would affect Medicaid does affect schools, something to think about. Also deductions, certain deductions that are given and being proposed for expenses, medical or educational expenses, or particularly those that affect non-public schools would have quite an effect on school districts. So just something for people to be aware of.
State and local tax also.
State and local tax as well. Property tax deductions, huge impact on schools across the nation. So anytime you're considering making, you know, supporting or not supporting philosophically or letting your congressman know about that, just remember that those deductions, those property tax issues and those Medicaid issues, they affect schools. So do your homework on that, I would recommend, before you, and advocate accordingly. But I also wanted to address a letter I received from one of our parents, a resident over the last week, and who was responding primarily to our last M-Step data report. And the letter indicated some concern that, you know, we did not just talk specifically about the cause for our significant rise in our high school M-Step scores at the end of the year and attribute that specifically to what we thought it was attributable to. So I wanted to take that opportunity now to be clear about that. One of the things that we did at our high school was we suspected, we weren't quite sure, but we sort of suspected that in some cases where our scores were lower than we would have expected, that we thought that it might be because of, you know, students not taking the assessments fully seriously or really...
Not last year, but the year before.
Not, last year's results. Last year's, which would have been, yes, not last spring, but the spring before. And in an effort to, to, as we discussed that and we sort of hypothesized on that, first of all, I want to say that, you know, we asked our students the next year to please do that and please take those scores seriously. And there was, and we changed the testing conditions in addition, when we gave the test, how we gave the test, the amount of time we gave the test, just with, the theory being, we want to, don't, you don't want to leave any points on the table because people don't think it's important, right? And you don't want to leave any points on the table because you're not picking a great time of day and you're not making the conditions, you know, as optimal as you can. The theory being, if you're going to spend the time taking these tests, which granted have, you know, a lot of issues with the way that they're used federally, with the way they're used to, as a hammer for schools to improve them and all the unjust, in my view, ways that these are used, you know, while we don't want to add to that narrative, on the other hand, we recognize that people do come to our school district on first impressions that have to do with the scores. And if we're, you know, not performing as well as we would like due to reasons that are, you know, kind of obvious that have to do with, one, you give the test, the conditions, and making sure that you're sending a message and asking everybody, please do your best, then, you know, you're leaving points on the table, right? So that was the theory for us, that we revised the following year. And we did see our scores rise substantially in a couple areas, science and social studies in particular. And so that is probably the reason we suspect that those scores rose, not because we did anything necessarily all that different instructionally, although, you know, teachers certainly are always trying to do their best instructionally. But the letter had asked and sort of challenged us to make that clear. And so I wanted to do that, is we're not hiding anything, that we think that that had a lot to do with why the scores rose. That said, we want to be careful in our messaging, you know, going forward because we want to ask people to do their best, but we don't want to put undue pressure on people. We don't want to, in any way, go too far in that regard. You may recall that I've been a pretty strident, I've been pretty strident in advocating against standardized testing in the sense that they're, the influence that they're given is outsized compared to what you really learn from them. The amount of time that they take to administer is like two months out of your instructional year. I could go on and on about all the issues that I have with how standardized testing is used and overused and overemphasized. And I want to be clear about that. You know, but again, want to make sure we're not contributing to that and we're not going too far and joining that chorus. But, you know, I want to also make sure that our students are working hard, that if we're going to take the test, let's show what we really know so we're really getting accurate readings. And I am sympathetic to our high school students, by the way, who take the ACT and the SAT, not just, you know, they take the SAT as part of the M-Step, but let's be clear that they're taking it over and over again, trying to get the very best score to get into the very best universities and colleges. So I could understand that if a test doesn't have a lot of value in that regard to a student, wow, you know, they're like, one more test that I have to sit and take. I'm sympathetic to that and we don't want to over-message that. And we'll be careful not to over-message that going forward. But we're basically saying, hey, put your best foot forward. Give it, give it the whole college try, whatever you want to call it, you know, and let's, and if you're, since we have to take the test, let's, let's see what we really know. I hope that that's helpful in clarifying that message. And we intend to move forward in that direction in the future. Lastly, I want to message, a couple of things real quick. Chorus Line is starting Thursday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. We're excited about Chorus Line and our students, we know, are going to give a great performance. I'm planning to attend on opening night and looking forward to that. This week, I'm going to be doing something I haven't done since becoming a superintendent. I'm planning on substituting in a classroom on Thursday morning. Be ready, students, you know who you are. I don't know if they know who's coming, but I'm looking forward to it. And I plan on substituting in, you know, three or four or five classrooms this year and if all goes well, continuing that practice. I applaud the work our teachers do and I, it's easy to get disconnected from the work that teachers do in my role. So I will be, I will be doing that in half-day increments as often as I can, starting with elementary, which is my, my background. And then we'll see if I go into middle school and high school after that. Friday, we have something going on that is another first, and our Learning Services team is putting this on along with several of our teachers. We're going to be having a data dig. We just had a study session in which we talked about data. M-Step data is just one kind of data. We don't spend as much time on as the formative data, the data that kind of informs our teachers and our students how they're doing on a short-term basis in the classroom and in schools. And that's the kind of data that we know is the most helpful instructionally. So we're going to be spending time on that. We're going to be kind of having conversations and showing systems that, for having discussions around data so we can learn and all the things we do to create a culture that drives a healthy and collegial discussion for the benefit of our students around instruction and teaching and learning and so on. So we're going to do that Friday for the first time. We're excited about that. And lastly, we're excited because next week, on Saturday, the Model UN Conference is going to be hosted at Bloomfield Hills High School. We are going to see 1,200 students coming to this conference from 33 high schools, five universities, and two outside organizations all coming. And this is hosted by Matt McLeod and his students hosting, bringing this together and organizing this. And it is quite a thing. And for those of you who've never seen Model UN in action, you ought to come, come on down because it's going to be something to see. It is a great example of our guiding principles coming to life. Thanks.
Excellent. Wow, that's a lot going on. That's fabulous. All right, well, now it is time for us to move on into our consent agenda. And Jackie, could you lead us through, please?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of October 26, 2017. Request to approve final contract payments for November 27, November 2017 in the amount Request to approve monthly financial reports. Request to approve disbursement reports. Request to approve HR actions.
Is there support?
Support.
Word for Mr. Cullen, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite your good forward, who's going to give us our report on service standards.
Working in the hall to see if I can pull this off. She knows me all too well.
Big tires. Big tires.
I got it, Dave. Okay. Except how do you get that to go away?
How do you get on that?
Brian, are those, those aren't the specs for the...
Monster bus.
Next set of buses we're...
How do you get on that bus?
It's a monster truck, but it's a monster bus.
Yeah, this is Brian's version of a recreational vehicle.
So I'm here today to talk to you about service standards. And this is something that I'm very passionate about and have been very excited to take on, on behalf of the district. So I selected this image because it's kind of what we all think about when we think about customer service, right? You think about all the bells, all the whistles, everything that you could possibly need for a excellent experience. And certainly, whoever has this in their fleet is doing a nice job. So let's talk about service standards and what they are. Service standards are very intentional. They are engineered. There's something that you really have to focus on and you have to have strategic moves, which we are starting to put into place now. So Disney says that exceptional service is about systems, standards, and processes. And those are things that we are working on aligning right now within our district. So the first step in this work is identifying our quality standards. When you talk about service standards, you really need to know at your core, what do you believe as an organization is paramount in delivering exceptional service? So what are the non-negotiables for your organization? And what we do is we identify those things. They provide consistency. They help staff members when there are irreconcilable tie breaks. So when you're in that difficult situation, as many of our staff find themselves every single day, Rob talked about the challenges of a teacher. And you can only imagine in a kindergarten classroom with the, the one kid bouncing and the other kid over here, and there's one that's getting ready to launch themselves over, you know, into the book area. There's a lot of activity in our classrooms with our hands-on learning and experiential learning, and kids are really getting dirty with it. And that's great. We want the messy fingers. We want, you know, messes on the tables and floors. But that means that there's a lot of snap decisions. And snap decisions in our offices. I met with our building secretaries as part of our service standards work and heard about the challenges that they face with the door buzzer system and the kid whose nose is bleeding and the mom coming in with the forgotten lunch. And, you know, those are just three of the 12 things happening in front of them. So if we identify our service standards that to our core we believe, and then we put them in priority order, that helps our staff members identify what and who do I take care of first and how does that play out? And how is that supported and backed by my entire organization, all the way up to you, the board? Because if we all internalize this and we commit to it and we agree upon it, then it's something we can all live by every day and know that we have each other's back on it. So as a school district, we have committed to providing a safe, caring, and resourceful service experience. Those are three words that came out of a lot of brainstorming as mostly an administrative team, but those are also words that we plunked from our teachers and from our community members. If you remember, we did some branding work about five years ago when I first got here. And there was a lot of focus groups that went into that branding work and a lot of things that were talked about that made us special as a district. So those aren't new words to us. Those are just our commitments to our service experience. So when we talk about how we define those words, we actually put some definitions because, believe it or not, educators cannot agree on the right synonym to use in defining our top three words. So there's a lot of passion behind this work and that's really great to see, but we certainly like our synonyms here. So safety, we, we define that as providing for the physical, emotional, and social safety of our students, staff, and our visitors. So that includes our entire community. I talked to you a couple of weeks ago about our, our spring survey results and how those without children in our, in our school community feel the least welcomed and the least respected. So we want to make sure that we're providing for their safe experience as much as we are for those who are here every day. Caring, engaging every individual with respect, warmth, and compassion in a supportive, positive, and equitable way. We know that equity and inclusion is a big focus for us and will always be a big focus for us. So that's something that we're committing to in our service standards as well. It needs to be across the board. Resourceful, serving students, staff, and all community members in a manner that is inviting, helpful, informative, responsive, and efficient. So those are the things that we truly value, that we've identified to our core. That was, that was big work because it really gives us that key starting point. So how? How do we do this throughout the entire district? Because, believe it or not, we have tons of processes. We have the arriving to school process. We have the getting lunch process. We have the how-to-get-your-report-card process. We have processes through just about every lens, including stakeholders without children in our schools, who use our schools as polling locations, who use our schools as resources for information, like when we were without water. And we heard from, from residents that they were using our website to find information. So we know that we have lots of processes and we're not going to tackle them all at once. But as we do, we're going to walk sort of this process that I call the dotted process. It's a tried and true technique that puts the, the service experience on a line. And it's really a single line. Now, sometimes it might deviate, but we're going to put every moment in the service experience through the lens of the person experiencing it on a line. So the first dot, if we take arriving to school, most... to school, most people would imagine is walking through the school doors, right? You're arriving to school. Welcome. Good morning. It's really not. It's the moment you leave the house. It's the moment that the child forgot the homework on the kitchen counter, the lunchbox on the kitchen counter. It's the moment that the dog ate something legitimately. Dog ate my homework. You know, that starts that student's day. So we map that dot, and we can identify it as a red dot. It's a really negative experience. And for some of our students, that first moment might be really negative, and we need to acknowledge that. Might be a yellow dot where it's kind of meh. I didn't really want to get up, but I got up. I'm here. I'm, I'm going. And it might be a green dot. Boy, I love school. I can't wait to go. I'm bounding down the stairs, right? So there's all kinds of dots. It might be on our buses. What does that look like? It might be in the carpool lane. What does our carpool lane look like? It's pretty unique that we open the door for every student in the morning in our carpool lanes, and we welcome them out of the vehicle. Mom and dad don't have to leave the driver's seat. It's very efficient, right? But we have to evaluate these dots for our service standards. So we're going to look at them. Are they safe? Are they caring? Are they resourceful? And we're going to look at each of those dots, and we're going to see what's the experience? Where are we promising service versus where are we actually delivering it? So we look at delivering exceptional service once we've actually mapped it. So we're going to map it on that big line. We're going to identify those dots. We're never going to get all green. We know that. That's just not how life works. We all have red moments where they used to be green and vice versa. But we're going to look to, to provide as many green experiences as we can. So when we deliver it, we're talking about people, process, and place. There's a, there are sort of three prongs to that stool that keep that stool up. So people, all the people that have a hand in the process. That's, that's the family that cares for the student at home. That might be a babysitter that's instrumental in their life. That's certainly their teacher, their bus driver, all the hands in that process. But it's also our third-party vendors. We're with GRBS now, and they're part of our family. They're part of our team. And so this is, this is work that we will be working on with them. So they understand they're GRBS, and I'm sure they have their core mission, but they work here, and they're embedded in our culture. So they need to understand what's valuable to us. Places, anywhere the customer meets us. We might think of that as, as the classroom, and it is. It certainly is the classroom. But it could also be our website. It's our phone tree. It's that very first friendly voice that hopefully picks up, and you talk to a, a live, real person. You know, we all know what it's like to be diving into that phone tree in your six presses deep and what that feels like. That's not a green dot. It's also our break rooms because I want to point out that these aren't just processes that we're looking to put into place for external stakeholders. This is about how we treat and value our employees as well. Because we know if we take care of our people, they'll take care of the community, and they will take care of their students. So in terms of process, again, it's really intentional. It's very engineered. We have to walk that timeline, and we have to figure out what, where are our red and orange dots, and how do we make them green? What can we improve? What can we tweak? And what's within our ability and what's not? Finally, on the road to service excellence, we're going to look at service recovery. We're not one of those fortunate organizations that gets to hand out free flights to Fiji when they mess up. We're not Delta. We can't bump you to first class. There are very few things that, that we can do that are of monetary value, right? But that's not really what we value. What we value are opportunities and experiences and rich instructional moments. So what can we look at within our toolbox that we might be able to offer as a service recovery? We don't have that list yet. That, this isn't work that we've undertaken just yet. But the, the bottom line, the bottom principle I've illustrated for you is that no one owns the customer, but everybody owns the moment. And so hopefully, if you're able to look at that and say, this isn't my fault, but it is my problem, then you're able to use service recovery to help that, that community member or someone with the hurt feelings recover. Exceptional service is built together, and we're working with teams individually and collaboratively to start to map out this process because it does take a lot of time and energy to look at every little single touch point, talk about the details within that touch point. It's pretty cumbersome work, and we're undertaking it with several groups or teams this year. So one goal that I have is the registration experience. You saw a little bit of that with the online registration that was introduced this fall, but we need to look at that again because this isn't just a one-and-done. We don't draw the timeline and go, okay, we think we got it, and live with it for 10 years. This is every year. So now we redraw that timeline. What exists now? Now that we've rebuilt online registration, now what does that look like? And then where are our new red and orange dots, and what can we do about that? The prospective family experience. We know that tours are tripling, and families are moving in, and this is all great news. But with high volume comes a lower service experience, right? Because there's more people that we have to serve and try to serve at that same high standard. So how do we gain some efficiency to be able to serve them better? How do we allocate resources? How are we resourceful? Okay? And then the exit experience, we're going to be looking at that. That kind of popped up through some coincidences that we found out that families are incredibly frustrated when they leave our district. There's just not a, a very well-defined process. And again, that's no one's fault. That's us growing really fast and technology suddenly being shoved into our hands. And there's districts out there that are looking for things electronically, and how is that funneled and filtered? And then athletics, recreation, and physical plant, and that's actually the work that is the furthest along right now. So we're, we're getting ready to wrap up that initial phase of mapping it out and having those deep dives and those deep discussions in a detailed way. So we're working on that right now. Are there any questions? Yes.
Does David feel like he's, he and his people are part of this team? Because, you know, I saw the three intersecting circles, and it seemed to me that surrounding or underpinning all of them as a facilitator of the process is technology. How can we leverage technology to make all of those things happen as efficiently as possible? So if he, if he and his team have not been engaged yet, you know, I hope we will engage them because they'll be able to do, to your point, we've got so many people doing so many things to the degree that we can use technology effectively to basically enable those processes and support those processes. With technology, it's going to make us a lot more efficient and take a lot of the frustration off the shoulders of our people. So that was more of a question than anything else.
Certainly. Certainly. And each team is engaged as they come into the process. So in working with physical plant services and athletics and recreation, we're really talking about facility usage. And we have that new software system called eSpace that was brought on about two years ago. And what's interesting is, as we mapped it, we found that eSpace was perhaps one of the greenest dots in the entire timeline, that that piece of technology was being used pretty effectively and pretty religiously. As we dove into it deeper, we found that the people part of the process of the use of the technology was maybe turning it a little orange.
Right.
That there wasn't clear understanding and guidelines and consistency in that use of technology. So the technology, it's really important that we have those systems in there, and Dave's great at helping bring those on board. But we also have to talk about our people process around the systems, around the, the software. Because if you're using it one way, and Cynthia's using it another, and I'm using it completely different, then when we go into that system, we're relying on data that's put in three different ways.
Right.
So that's part of this work, is looking at how are we all as humans factoring into this? You know, I said today in one of our sessions, this isn't, we're not looking for zeros and ones like, you know, binary code. We're, we're looking to evolve our practices as a team so that we can work together on all of these different processes and provide a very, very comforting experience for all of our families.
Exactly. Yeah. If, if we look at it as people following a prescribed process that is enabled by technology, and that takes a lot of that variation out of it, and they can only use the system one way, but the system's been designed along a efficient process model. So it takes the frustration and the confusion and duplication of effort out, so.
That's right.
I commend you guys for doing this. This is great.
Are there questions or comments? Howard?
Could you go back one slide?
This one?
Yep. So you've got four processes there. I'm assuming that you're basically like the facilitator or the coach in this whole process, helping us learn the Disney metrics and, and methodology and incorporating it to the district. For each one of these, is there a, a process owner or a team that's in charge of? I mean, how, how does that work in terms of ownership of the, the process?
Sure. So from start to finish, you know, we kind of look at it as Brian Goby would talk about, you need a facilitator, you need a champion, and you need an idea person, right? So in this case, I'm sort of facilitator and champion until we're through, and then it, it's packaged and ready to hand back to the teams and say, here you go. Now you're the facilitator and the champion of this process. And they can live through it and reengage any of us facilitators once there's more than just me. Because hopefully, at some point, there will be many of us helping to lead this charge.
And the trainer.
Right. So hopefully, at some point, they retake that, that full ownership, and I'm hands-off and on to, you know, another process and another challenge. It's really important that they take that ownership and, and that they're along with me every step. And there's a lot of, well, I don't know. You tell me. How does this work in the facilitation? Because, so I try to go in with the lens that I don't know anything about the district and that I don't, I'm, I'm not a parent in the district and haven't lived that process either. It, it's really enlightening and eye-opening, I think even for those in the room, to hear each other and hear their own perspectives. And it helps engage them into the work to the point where hopefully, when we're done, they're really excited to, to take those reins and drive.
Because having, Ed and I have had experience with these kind of things in, in the corporate world. Once you've done it, two things have to really happen to make it sustainable. One is to set up procedures and processes in writing so that as manpower turns over, you're not reinventing the wheel. It's, it's there. There are desk procedures. There are ways of doing things. And then needing to have continuous improvement so that it, you know, once we've done it, we don't forget about it. And as things evolve, both in terms of personnel turns over and also new things occur in that change, new computer systems, new regular rules coming from the state, whatever, that we incorporate that into the process. So we don't have to wait five years and have the system kind of, you know, fall, starting to fall apart a little bit. So just kind of a continual feedback process. And that's really where that champion comes in, to make sure that we, once we move from this four to another four, that we don't have to cycle back four or five years later and see the registration experience has sort of deteriorated.
Sure. And fortunately, both of those things are kind of built in. So, and, and the one that I'll highlight on is that, that process, that feedback loop, right? Because you do need to build in that feedback loop. And so we talk in the process piece when we're identifying those dots, especially when we get a red one or an orange one, we talk about what's a mechanism that we could put into place to give us consistent feedback throughout the process, ongoing, that might alert us to when it's starting to, to veer back to orange or veer back to red. So we build those in very intentionally as we're starting to talk about the process. Okay, we know this is a problem spot. It's been like that for a while. It's through no fault of all of ours. So if we're trying so hard and it's still red or orange, we're going to make it green. I feel confident in that. But what do we do? What do we put into place that will alert us and, and signal us to come back to this and revisit it? Especially because we know through the district dynamically, I mean, we're changing so fast, and there is a lot we have to react to and respond to. These processes change like that. So we need that, that metric. And Qualtrics, the survey company that we're using right now, fortunately, they have a whole library of surveys that actually work very nicely in with this work. So we can typically find something to at least give us a starting point and then build from that and customize it to us. And then the really nice thing is, we own the data. So just like you saw with the spring survey, we can really dive deep and look at it over a couple years.
Linking the, linking these and the survey into these. So this, that gives us some external feedback.
Exactly.
But having that champion's really important. And then having you be the champion of champions to monitor and make sure that everything is sort of going along year by year. Thank you.
Other comments? So I just have a question. I can't remember how, how many years ago it was when we first did the Disney training.
I believe we brought them in four years ago. Yep. About four or five years ago. And so I went back this summer to get the deep dive training. Yep.
So yesterday, I was in a MASB leadership class, and my facilitator was an ISD board member from Genesee County. And she was referring to the service standards that they had worked for, that for their whole county, for the ISD. But she said that they had looked at and worked with the Disney for a while, but then she'd gone to the Ritz-Carlton training process, and she thought that was, you know, even, even higher standard. And I wonder if you've heard anything about that and thought anything about it?
We looked at a variety of processes to, to start building our framework because we haven't completely taken the Disney model. We used some components that really worked for us. When I was looking at who does it best, I really wanted an organization that mirrored ours in that they serve mainly families. That's their primary audience. That they serve families from across the world. I mean, we, we have families speaking over 60 languages in their home. So I needed an organization that understood diverse makeup of families, that was looking to provide an experience that wasn't just purely fun, but also instructional in nature, which I think Disney has a history of providing both. And I think we try to do that fun, fun education, whatever the hybrid word is that they're using. But I think we try to do that in Bloomfield. We want to make education engaging and fun. So I wanted to learn from an organization that, that also serves multiple socioeconomic backgrounds. They, you know, I know it's Disney, and, and you think cha-ching when you think Disney, but there are affordable ways to experience Disney, and it, and it is filtered into most homes through the TV. So looking at how well we mirrored one another, I thought, okay, if they, if they can do it, they might have some nugget that we can take and, and kind of borrow and then morph. So this isn't exactly as the Disney way would prescribe it, but we've Bloomfieldized it.
Customized. Okay. Very good.
Here, I'm also thinking, we've, we're thinking about service standards and how do we make sure that the customer's satisfied? But really, there's a second benefit of these, let's looking at exit experience. It's not just making it a good experience for the person or the student and the parents who are leaving, but it also gives us information that we can then feed back into the rest of the organization about why these are happening. Perspective families, not only are we trying to recruit, but what about the parents who don't decide to take us? Why don't they? Why, you know, why do they go to Birmingham or to Troy as opposed to us? And what do we need to change, not just in the prospective family experience, but the entire way that we run the rest of the organization, to try to make sure that we go from 50% of the parent, of the, the families after we, you know, we give them the tour, they say, hey, I'm going to go to Bloomfield. We want to get that to 75 or 80%. What is it that turns some of them off? So it's, it's a combination, not only of the people, the, the customers, but also the feeding back that information into the rest of the, the company.
Right. It's a good point, that a lot of people think that those are too sensitive to ask. You know, it's, it's like talking about money or politics. Don't ask why they're leaving. But, but the reality is, most of our families are very willing to share that information. They want to talk to someone about their experience. Even if they've already made the decision to leave, they want to share with you the why. And, and they want to see it help another family, and they want to see you do something about it, whether it changes their decision or not. I think at that moment, that, that can't be our motivation, and it's not our motivation. It's how do we improve as an organization so that another family's not motivated to leave out of anger or frustration? Maybe they're leaving because dad got a new job somewhere, or, you know, there's some family life experience that's happening and taking them elsewhere. But we want to make sure that that's not, it doesn't turn into a frustrating experience for them. Well, it was great up until we tried to leave, and, you know, then we tried to get our paperwork transferred to China, and woo, that didn't work. So we don't want to create those moments either. We want them to have positive ones throughout. And we do want to learn more about our families and how to better serve them and better give them those experiences they crave.
All right. Thank you very much, Sherri. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then we can move on into our general discussion. I just wanted to pick up on a, an item that Dr. Glass mentioned about the chorus line. We do- We do also have senior gold card members who can also get tickets to go to our entertainment. And if you are a senior gold card member, you can contact Sharon Beltsowski at Comcast.net to help you get your tickets. And also that tickets are on sale now at www.eTix.com and search Bloomfield Hills High School to get tickets. And then I also want to thank our TV crew who are bringing us to you this evening, and that would be Kyle Abrams, Joel Hamilton, Henry Parkinson, and Vicki Chandler. Thank you very much for being here to help our students learn and to bring us to our community. And at this point, I'd like to invite Mr. Cohen to share our report from Finance and Facilities and Legal Affairs.
Yes. So we had just a couple of things on the agenda. First thing was our sinking fund, which is used for building improvements, is expiring in 2018. So we discussed a strategy in terms of the renewal of that sinking fund. And then the second item that we talked about, which Madam President went into detail earlier, was about the collaborative. So we talked about that at FFLA, but I won't go into it because I think you covered it quite well earlier. And that was the report from FFLA.
Very good. Anybody have anything else you want to, Jason or Howard, want to say anything about the M A S B conference?
It was a great conference. It was exhausting.
Sure.
And it was, it was probably more mentally exhausting than physically exhausting. There's a lot, lot of information to learn and digest. And there were some really good examples of some really, some really great things that other districts are doing around this, around the state, particularly in terms of equity and inclusion. One example I'd like to throw out there was the Oklahoma School District. I went to a session where they actually had students coming in to present to the school board members. And I think it's a, it was a, it was a testament to how well they've done on their journey towards being, becoming a more inclusive district. So.
And I intended one that Washtenaw County did on their countywide engagement on equity and inclusion as well.
M A S B has a number of resolutions that every year get looked at, and they're very extensive, probably 75 or 100 of them, that kind of set the structure for what M A S B wants their legislators to be enacting and, and following. Speaking of, of funding, a few years ago, something was incorporated into one of these resolutions that said that M A S B wants the state of Michigan to have equal funding for all districts. There was a lot of discussion, this was like three or four years ago, on that word, equal funding. And it, it passed. This year, there was an amendment to that to have changed that word equal to equitable. There we go. And there's always a lot of discussion over the difference between equal funding and equitable funding. There was a little bit of discussion. There were some people who were really pushing to leave the word equal in there, but the, committee of the whole, and there were probably four or 500 people in the room, the vast majority of them said that, no, we wanted to change that word to equitable. And that will lend a lot of weight to the collaborative study that we've talked about earlier today. So that, I think, was a major step forward because this word equal has been talked about since Proposal A was put into place, where the disparity in the different levels of funding between different districts had been there. And with the 2X formula and a lot of other things, we've been trying to get closer and closer to equal funding, but equal, you know, all students are not created the same, and they have different needs and different requirements, and so do different districts. And having every single student in the entire state getting the same exact amount of funding is not really the, the fair or right way to do things.
I'll just bring out one other point. First, I want to thank Jason and Howard for their time and energy and being engaged for several days at, at risk of life and limb, because when we came out of the delegate assembly on Thursday night, it was a blizzard in Lansing, and you could barely see in front of you. It was an interesting challenge. But I also want to note that I went to a session on the St. Lee Schools Foundation, and I just want to call out our Bloomfield Hills Schools Foundation. Several of us have had the opportunity in the last few days to spend some time reading through the 41 applications that members of our staff have, have submitted to the foundation for us to, to be able to consider for putting funds to do. And what I want to say is I appreciate the time and effort that everyone put into committing those, submitting those applications there. Wonderful additions that can enrich our students' experiences in every kind of way possible. And I wish, if I had all the money in the world, I would love to be able, that we could be able to fund every one of them. I know we won't be able to fund every one of them, but I, I don't want it to get lost in all the things that will happen before our next board meeting. To say thank you to all of you who took the time to think imaginatively and proactively to submit those applications, we really appreciate it. And we appreciate the support of our community as we've got our annual appeal going on, the breadth and depth of the kind of experiences that our, our staff are dreaming of, are only things that enrich the experience and, and help the student achievement for all of us. So thank you to everybody who's part of that project.
Cynthia, you attended the Washtenaw County Equity?
I did.
So do I. They did a, we had the superintendent of Washtenaw School District, which is Scott Menzel, who Rob knows, and a board member and some other people in their, their organization. And they had some very powerful words. They have a, and we, we've talked as our board of setting up some, some policies on equity, inclusion, and social justice. They at the ISD in Washtenaw County have also set up these kind of policies. But what they have done is gone to their staff, from the superintendent on down, and asked for, and they made it very clear for about 10 or 15 minutes, that they asked their, all their employees to commit to this policy. And if people are not willing to commit to that policy, the superintendent said, well, maybe this is not the right place of employment for you. Wow. So I don't know, you know, how other districts in the state, whether ISDs or individual boards, want to go that far, but it was a incredibly thought-provoking type of statement coming from the board and from the superintendent.
Out there from a number of the different sessions that we attended gave recommendations of resources that we could all use to, use to frame our, our thoughts about a lot of the top issues. And the Washtenaw folks also have Equity Index rubric that they are using, and they are going to be sending that to me, and I'm looking forward to seeing that. But there were a lot of some strategic planning session that I went to that was fascinating. Oakland ISD, seven folks from our, from the ISD, including Heidi Cattula, presented on the work that, that we, whole county is engaged in on the Michael Fulon New Pedagogies for Deeper Learning that Rob is trying to help to lead us into thinking more in, in, institutioning, institutionalizing or bringing into our, our being. And it was, it was fascinating to hear it from the countywide perspective. Anyway, it was a, it was a great experience, and so thank you for sending us. All right. Is that time, is this an opportunity for public comment? Do we have some cards? Yes, we do. Okay. I would like to invite Mary Blair to come forward from the BHGA, and she wants to talk with us about food and supply pantry.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to update you on something that the BHGA does. We've done it in the past, and we just had a restocking drive. We actually have, it's now housed at the high school, a food and supply pantry for students and staff. And we restocked it just in time for the holidays because, as we know, the holidays are arriving, and most holiday celebrations revolve around food. So this was stocked by teachers and staff in the district, and it's for staff and students who are in need at any time. So I'm going to give you guys the flyers that I handed out. The building principals know, school psychologists, counselors, the school social workers, teachers, et cetera. The Bohapa president, Deb Schultz, also knows. She's telling her members. So again, the more people that know about this, the better, because it is meant to be used. So we have non-perishable food items and then personal hygiene products as well. And if someone knows of anyone who is in need, my phone number and email address, and then our vice president, Phila Liberty, can be contacted so we can access that food pantry when anyone needs it. So I'm just going to, I'm going to hand the flyer to you, Jen.
That's terrific. Thank you, Mary. That's a wonderful program. Great. Any other public comment at this time? No? Okay. Then we have one item of board business, and it is our practice annually and our policy to, to select the process for choosing our board slate of officers for the 2018 school year. And we, by our policy number, our bylaw number 8115, we choose annually that process that we wish to use to select that slate of officers. And so I would be interested to hear any comments from the board or if you have a motion? There is a motion here? No?
I should refer to this recommendation, but.
Well, I can't.
I move that the Board of Education approve the board authorization process per bylaw 8115 to determine the slate of officers for the calendar year 2018 by the Vice President, Treasurer, and Secretary convening and then making a recommendation to the remainder of the board as to a slate of candidates for 2018.
The nominated committee process.
Support.
Support from Mr. Ford. Would you, any, like to have any discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. So my only closing comment this evening is thank you and happy Thanksgiving. And at this time, the board will move into a study session to discuss the proposed land, agreement for land exchange.